Welcome to the Planning Commission tonight. The date is Monday, February 10th. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May be seated. The first item of tonight's agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or changes they'd like to make?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the actual approval for the minutes for January 27th, 2014 meeting. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes from the January 27th, 2014 meeting. Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions at all?
One abstention.
Okay, Julie, did you get that? You're good? Okay. Moving on to the public hearings for tonight. The first one is variance 2013-11 is by Olympic Hills Golf Club. Location is 10-625 Mount Kerr Road in Eden Prairie, Minnesota. Request is to permit an accessory structure at height of 80 feet. City code permits a maximum height of 30 feet in the golf course district, Table 5, Section 11.03, Sub 2B11-11E. With that being said, with the report on the project, please come forward. State your name, spell your last name for city record, and please tell us a little bit about your project.
Jake Schmetz, Golf Course Superintendent, last name S.C.H., M.I.T.Z. Thank you for having me here tonight. It wasn't too long ago that we were here, a little more than five months ago, discussing our project with regard to land alteration permit, so thank you for having me here again. Since our last meeting with the Planning Commission, we've compiled a little bit of information regarding what we'd like to accomplish with the driving range, specifically the netting structure that we're proposing. To go backwards here a little bit, in 1969, when our range was constructed, when the golf club was founded at that time, technology has changed a little bit in regards to golf clubs and golf balls. Just a little bit of an aside here, we have members that are now in their 60s that are hitting the ball further than what they did in their 40s and 50s. And quite frankly, our range is not constructed to those standards. The thing that, the issue that we're dealing with right now is we have two residences at the very south end of the driving range, 11023 Spoon Ridge, as well as 11010 Spoon Ridge. They're getting pelted with golf balls. And we're looking to put up a structure that we know is gonna protect their homes, more importantly, protect the children that are in the neighborhood. And where we came up with that height of the structure, we had a ball flight study conducted by Ping. Various, various parts of that study included wind speed, wind direction, temperature, ball flight, et cetera, et cetera. We did look into a couple of different alternatives. We're limited with what, where we could move the range on site, on the property itself, just because of the way the golf course is laid out back in 1969. And also, we're limited by length. We're not able to go south, simply because of the neighborhood. We're not able to extend north with any reasonable amount of distance, simply because we have a wetland between the golf, between the Range T and the clubhouse. We're very limited on how deep we can make it go. So therefore, we looked down the avenue of putting up an accessory structure in 80 feet in height. In other cases on the golf course, we've always been able to slightly shift alignment, maybe slide a green over, shift tee boxes a little bit for protection or plant trees, but in this case, we're really quite limited by what we're able to accomplish. I think the packet probably gives you the best idea of what the structure itself is gonna look like and the location on the schematic, so if there's any questions that I could answer, please fire at will.
We'll go to staff report, and then we'll come back to you if we have any further questions. Thank you again very much. Mr. Franzen, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested variance meets the three-part test for reasonable use, unique circumstance, and will not alter the character of the locality. And the staff recommendation is for the commission to approve final order 23-11.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we go to the audience at all?
I do. Mr. Franzen, can you comment on homeowner notification and homeowner input if any was received? I know there were, there was some input relative to not wanting to get pelted by golf balls, but anybody else around the neighborhood have any comments?
Now, we basically took the area on the south side of Mount Kerr and notified all of those homeowners, and we did not receive any comments or emails from anybody within the notification area.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up comments, commissioners at all? Seeing that this is a public hearing, does anyone out in the audience have any comments or concerns about this project? So now would be the time to come forward? Okay, not seeing any. Commissioners, I'll call. If not, I'll entertain a motion for...
Mr. Chair, before the motion, I saw a notation from a letter here of another resident that looks like indicating limited flight golf balls. Want to know what kind of discussion that is in reference to this? If there's been discussion on that?
Can, please come forward and answer that question. Thank you.
We did have a discussion on limited flight golf balls at the club. Kinda, I guess the way to put that is if you're gonna, if you're gonna lift weights with a 100-pound weight, you want 100 pounds, right? When you're, when you're practicing at the range, it's very difficult to practice effectively when you're hitting a shot that's supposed to go a certain distance, and you go on the golf course as a different distance. That's part of, from the, from the player's side. On the other hand, too, we don't feel like limited flight golf balls still give us the type of protection because they can still carry a certain length, a certain distance, depending on who the player is. You could probably have styrofoam at that point, and you know, that's probably what you'd be down to in terms of golf balls. So we did talk about that, but from our standpoint, it still doesn't offer the type of protection that we desire for the residents.
And I was just wondering if the discussion had taken place. I mean, I can totally understand if you want to perfect your technique, you want to utilize the equipment that you're gonna be using up on when your score really matters, and so I just want to make sure that that had been discussed.
Yeah, we had looked into that. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe just one other question. Looking, looking at the layout here on one of the maps, the, the net will have significant visibility in terms of people living in residential properties around it, right?
Yep.
And they haven't, we haven't gotten any specific input or response from anyone. I'm just wondering, is there any concern that once it goes up, you start to get significant feedback? Because it is a large, and I believe will be particularly visible to the folks who are around on the southern side. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, you know, the, the poles that we're looking at installing are two-piece, so, and I believe the first section is a, is a 50-foot section, and then there's another 30-foot that basically gets screwed in on top of that. So we will have some flexibility there. I wouldn't, obviously, wouldn't recommend that because I think we'd be spending a lot of money and still not getting the protection that we'd want for those two homes. It's interesting because the neighbors in that portion of the, on the south end there, they're, they're very tightly, they're very tight in terms of the neighborhood. They all talk to each other, and I haven't heard anything negative from anybody up there. So I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't know how to answer that, I guess, in terms of what the feedback is gonna be once it's up.
Will the net be going down in the winter time? Is it up full-time or...
Up full-time.
Okay.
What kind of mitigation do you have on ice, ice and snow weighing down the netting structure?
Yeah, this, the company that we're working with has done a couple of structures in the metro, and the netting that we're going with is rated to withstand ice and sleet accumulation. And the poles likewise are rated for a category 3 wind load, so they can withstand 90 mile an hour winds, so the, the strength is there. I have seen pictures of poles bent over because of the weight of the ice, but that's, that was our main concern when we were going with the company that we chose.
Poles bending over, I think, would be one thing, but I've seen pictures of netting, not in the grand scale of that, but like deer and fence netting completely blanketed as like a wall, a sheet of white from the, from the snow and the ice buildup, and that could create complication aesthetically or engineering-wise.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't know what, how that would be handled. I know we weren't planning on taking it down just because of the height and then the cost to put it back up every year.
Curiosity on the wind, you mentioned the wind. What, on the resonance, resonance, not the residence, but the resonance, I mean, when wind goes through, traveling through, they're gonna create some sort of frequency, I would imagine. Has there been any data to show that that's within the, the range of our hearing?
Yeah, that's not a question I had asked. I can look into that, though. I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I haven't thought of that. I know there'll be some, you know, you get heavy winds, I'm sure there'll be a little bit of clanging, if you will, with the, with the guide wires that you have for holding it up, but I haven't, I never thought of that.
Good question. That's it for me. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. Not seeing anybody from the audience, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to recommend approval of final order 2013-11.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, move forward with your project. Thank you very much. Mr. Franzen, I have one question before we move on. I'm noticing here on this yellow sheet where it talks about, at the very end, it talks about like with variants 20, 2013-11, it goes to Table 5, Section 11.3. Do those need to be repeated for each time? That seems new to me.
No, they would not.
Okay. Just wanted to ask. Okay, with that being said, I'm moving on to variance 2013-12. The location of the project is 8547 Crane Dance Trail in Eden Prairie. The request is to permit an accessory structure or pool with a side yard setback of 8.6 feet. City code requires a 10-foot minimum side yard setback in the R1-13.5 zoning district. With that being said, with the report on the project, please come forward. State your names, spell your last name, and please tell us a little bit about the project.
Yeah, it's Brace Helgeson, H.E.L.G.E.S.O.N. Essentially, we, we tried to sell this property as one lot. It was originally, back in '94, two lots, and the homeowner put the two lots together, built a home on one lot, and built a pool on the other lot. So in, in the process of selling the property now, we were unsuccessful at selling it at the million-dollar range, so we broke it up. We have now sold the home, but have not sold the pool lot. And so when this pool went in, apparently it, it got approved to go in where it is now, and that's a foot and a half, foot and a half shy of meeting the code. So in order to sell this other lot, we're going to eventually probably fill that pool in, in which case this won't even be an issue. So, but we've got to close this property. This, the home is sold, scheduled to close March 1, March 15, and so we need to get a variance for that closing.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. If we have any further questions, we'll come back to you. Mr. Franzen, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This variance meets three-part test for reasonable use, unique circumstance, and consistency with what's in the immediate area. You'll note that one thing that is different with the staff report compared to all other variances that you've seen in the past is that we have a final order and we have a resolution. The final order grants the setback waiver to the property line. The resolution allows the final order with conditions to be recorded on the property so the future homeowner knows that they have a certain period of time within which to apply for a building permit, either keep the pool or demo the pool, or to fill in the pool and remove the pool. Because we have a requirement in our city codes, you cannot have an accessory structure like a pool or a garage or a tennis court unless you have a main structure like a house. So we're giving them about a year's time period to kind of sort out the sale, the splitting of the lot, make the transaction, get another home built, and if they choose not to build a house, then we'll have the pool filled in, and then we'll be in compliance with the city code. Kind of a unique situation. Something we had to work closely with the homeowners, their attorneys, and our attorneys to make this happen, but we think this is the proper course of action for this situation.
So I'm assuming, Mr. Franzen, if we did not move forward with this, this would put the home sale null and void, in the city's opinion?
Probably yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franzen. I appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I have a question on what Mr. Franzen had stated on the one-year, the 12-month time period. Is that from the date of the final order being signed, so that'll be effectively in the next three, four weeks or so?
The final order becomes active 15 days after the commission has taken action on it. The reason there's a 15-day period is in case there's someone in the neighborhood or someone from the council that would want to hear an appeal of your recommendation. If we get no requests filed by the city clerk within 15 days, then this variance becomes ineffective, and so it's one year from 15 days from tonight, that that one-year clock would start.
And then the restrictions that would be placed under the findings of fact then would become, would be enacted?
That's correct.
So I think I'll table some more of those comments. I'm a little leery on that aspect of it, but see what the public has to say first.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else before I go to the public at all? Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns specifically about this project? So now would be the time to move forward? Okay. Not seeing any?
I'll take the floor again, I guess. I'm just a little concerned because the way it's written, the property owner should remove the water pole within that 12-month period on the new, and I'm assuming it was conjoined back in, what, '05 or '06, and then now it's being split to be the two separate that it was before, two separate building locations. I'm assuming the building pad is probably still there in place underneath a bunch of landscaping, but I may be reading this inaccurately, but I don't want to put undue pressure on a future homeowner to have to remove something if it sells 9 months from today in three months. Because it follows the property, it's gonna be recorded with the property, that finding of fact. And maybe I'm reading this inaccurately.
Actually, you raise a valid point. I mean, item number four is a condition of approval. If you think that 12 months is a correct timeframe, you would accept it as it is. If you feel like this should be allowed a little bit more time to bring this to some sort of a conclusion, you certainly could have the staff modify that condition to 14 months, 15 months, two years.
I'm not sure. Go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, the homeowner initiated this, they now need to sell. The consequences of that initiation in 2004 are more problems selling the house.
Okay.
I think that having a non-conforming structure on, you know, a piece of property, particularly a pool, I mean, there, I under, I see here that it looks to be, it will be remained covered and not used, but, you know, potential safety issues and things like that, I guess I, I think a year struck me as a reasonable timeframe to, to allow some resolution. It allows the short-term problem to be solved of closing on one property, but then has a year to deal with it, then, I mean, worst cases, they fill in the pool, demo the pool, and go forward. So now, maybe just to build on Travis's comment, if, if someone were to run into that circumstance of buying this property in 11 months and not wanting to make a decision, could they come back in front of the, could they ask for a variance or something to come back in front of the Planning Commission?
They would come back and apply for a variance and have the commission review condition number four. And at that point, if you so choose, you could modify that condition and give them X number of months out in order to finish what they need to finish.
I guess, my personal opinion is I think the 12 months is reasonable, particularly since there is kind of a plan B if, if, if it were to come up, that they could appeal that, and a decision could be made at that point in time.
Or would it make sense, potentially, I was just thinking out loud, that once this, once that property is sold, then your clock starts moving?
I think the problem with that is that property could not be sold for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the only, the only thing I wasn't very clear on is I don't know how marketable, the owner would know a lot better than I do, how marketable a property that is a standalone, non-public pool is. And therefore, I don't know how long it would take, nor is it directly our concern, how long it would take to sell, but what happens if it does take quite a long time to sell for a price that's agreeable to the owner? How does that impact this one-year time period?
It doesn't impact it at all. We're just saying, one year from the effective date, we expect to have the pool taken on.
No wonder you're from, 15 days from now, we'll be still freezing temperatures and frozen ground, and then you've got road restrictions after that. I don't know if maybe a discussion on, is taking the environmental aspect into consideration on this date, if we need to have that discussion? I mean, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be as, as best for the current property owner, and I'm assuming that they're wanting to put this on the market. It's not currently, that lot is currently not on the market as a non-conforming lot.
I guess that's why, too, before you say something, Mr. Evans, that's why I was thinking, do it from, start the clock running from the date of the sell of the property, I guess, because then you have the winner to deal with versus someone coming in 11 months from now and buying it.
The difficulty we have is we're not gonna know when it's sold. So if you're thinking you wanted to have, because of the time of the year, you want to make this 15 months, we'll make it 15 months.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's opposed to this from what I'm seeing. We're just trying to work out the logistics and make sure that it works for everybody.
Yeah, in terms of real estate timeframes, if you wanted to put, put 18 months on it, you've got two selling seasons, you know, two summer selling seasons, so I think that's the easiest, although I think in reality, this pool will be filled in this summer because it makes it more saleable, and the seller is prepared to do that. We've already got costs to do that, and so I, I think that will become a moot issue, but if you wanted to just build in a little more flexibility, 18 months would be more than enough. Absolutely.
What a...
And it is on the market right now. We have somebody interested, and, and they are asking us to fill it in, and so I, I think this is all gonna clean itself up, but of course, I'm not, I'm not a sage. I don't know for sure, but it's on the market at a, at a reasonable price for what that property offers, and we already have interest, so...
So you're not overly concerned about it, then?
I'm not.
Okay.
If you put 18 months on it, we'd be fine. I think we'll be fine with just 12 months, but of course, 18 months keeps us from coming back here and asking for an extension.
So presently, you'd have an interested party in that second lot, and then in also the homesteaded lot?
No, the two separate people.
Two separate people in each.
Yeah, we have, right. We have a contract to close March 15th on the structure, the home, and the other property is on the market at $299, but that's with the pool, and the seller has made statements that with the estimates in hand, he's prepared to fill that in to move the property.
Well, that certainly takes care of your concern on the safety aspect, and, I mean, statements are one thing.
Yeah, and on the safety issue, I mean, there's a, there's a fence all the way around right now, so it's no less safe than it was.
Right. And I'm assuming there's city codes to filling in a pool?
Yeah, and we'll, yeah, the, the pool company will follow all those, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Kirk, you still...
No, I, I'm either good with the 12 months, or, you know, Travis brought up some good points about just the logistics. If we wanted to move that out for, you know, whatever it would take, three or four more months to allow a second, you know, allow them to fill it in, not necessarily this summer, but the next summer. I'm just concerned about having, I'll speak it, or maybe I'll be a little harsh in saying this, kind of having this non-conforming white elephant sitting, sitting there, you know, with, and, and having that happen, having that...
For too long a time.
Stay there for too long a time.
Right.
So I think there does need to be a reasonable time limit on it. You know, 12 months seemed okay. You brought up a point about, you know, just the season and the ability to demo it on month 12. It's reasonable comment, so we could either leave it there with the understanding that it'll likely be done this summer, or add three or four months, whatever we would need to, to put it into the next construction season.
Well, I just made, made a statement on the timeframe in helping them out, but if they're not necessarily worried about the timeframe, they're gonna probably do something in the next summer here or this upcoming summer. Kind of a moot point, though, just trying to see, you know, help the property itself out.
I think, I think it was a great point, but due to the lack of concern on their part, probably the 12 months makes sense.
You're okay with the 12 months?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right. I didn't see anybody else from the audience that had any comments or concerns, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to recommend approval of the final order 2013-12 and resolution 2014-01.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Evans, you move forward with your project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to variance 2014-01. The location is an Outlet A Bryant Lake View Estates Edition. Request is to permit a residential dock to extend into Bryant Lake, a length of 180 feet. City code permits 75 feet to permit a residential dock setback of seven feet from both, from both the north shoreline to extend into Bryant Lake. To permit a residential dock setback of 10 feet from the south lot line to extend into Bryant Lake. City code requires 15 feet. To permit boats moored on the north side and south side of the proposed dock to encroach into another authorized dock use area. City code does not encourage dock design to unnecessarily require and encourage boats using other authorized docks use area. And to permit a residential dock of 1,192 square feet, city code maximum is 450 square feet. With that being said, with the report of the project, please come forward. State your last name, first, or your first and last name, spell your last name, first city record, and then tell us a little bit about your project.
Okay. David Steen, S.T.E.E.N., and I live in 6473 Beach Road. I have here an additional photo of the dock and surrounding areas, if you'd like.
You are welcome to go over to that other podium right there. There's a camera that's up above, so you can just put it down there, and we will catch an eye of that. Also, if you would grab that microphone, feel free to present from there and just speak right into that microphone. If you, how many, is it just one copy that you have? Is it... How many more of those copies do you have, sir?
I, uh, no.
Okay, why don't you give them to Commissioner Kirk there, and then why don't you come back to this podium right there, and we'll just leave that right there for the viewing Thank you very much.
Okay, so the dock that is in that photo is, it has the green boathouse, and it's at kind of the point of where the, the water meets in the corner there of the lake. And that dock is 100 feet out, but the water is only one foot deep. Now, we had a pontoon in there, and it was his pontoon, and we couldn't even get it out of the lift. So we need a greater distance to get further into the lake, and also, you can see that the, the weeds just completely cover that area. So you need a little bit further out just to get to open water. Now, the, the proposed dock wouldn't affect any of the neighboring... Now, the, the proposed dock wouldn't affect any of the neighboring places like the school there. I, I went to the school there and they only use, do you see the creek sort of towards the bottom of the page? On the right side up there, they only use that area. And then our dock wouldn't encroach on anyone on the left side of the page. Now, and we got a approval note from the school that says that they'd be fine with the dock. And then here in this photo, we have, the dock starts, would start at the bottom of the page. And that, that's going out to where the water starts here is twenty feet. So that, it takes twenty feet just to get to the water. So we'd need a greater distance for that. Now, and it, it wouldn't encroach at all. And, and then the, the bulrushes here, those are about eighty feet out. So you have to get past those two. So the first hundred feet are just getting past all the stuff that's in the way. And then you need, like, two feet of water is at the proposed distance. So we, we need that for putting boats in. So, yeah, that's, that's the proposal.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to staff report. If you have any questions, we'll come back to you. Thank you again for your time. Mr. Franz, on the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this variance meets the three-part test for reasonable use, unique circumstances, and will not alter the character of the locality. And the staff recommendation is for the commission to approve final order twenty-three dash eleven.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns at all? Go ahead.
Just to clarify, I think the project proponent mentioned the length of the lot and its, or the length of the dock in its present state. Did you, what was that figure that you stated?
Was a hundred feet over the summer.
Hundred feet, okay. So staff report states that it's a hundred and seventy-six feet long presently. Are we referencing different, different form, or is it, are you going from the ordinary high water line and?
That was the old dock before, just a rental dock over the summer.
Okay, great.
The only other question I, I would have is how much variability do we get in, in the lake in terms of depth of water and so on? Aren't, how did you pick this length and will it cover a number of years based on that variability?
We, we measured the length of, like, how far out we used a tape measure when it was icy. And then also how deep it was. So based on past, the past, we know how deep it usually is. So it should be about two feet at that length.
But you're not, is there any risk that, that, that's going to be one foot in a particularly dry year and less than that in, in another dry year? I'm just curious.
It, it shouldn't be, but it's always possible, but it's unlikely.
Okay.
Good question. Commissioners, any other questions?
Well, I think that that's a very good valid point because that, the slope gradient in that area is very shallow. And so you've got one foot of depth that's going to go out or in significantly, maybe a hundred and fifty feet.
Well, I was, I was just thinking about, I wasn't sure if the current situation was due to a moderate retreat on the part of the lake already. And if there would be further retreat, you need your, you need your two feet for the kinds of activities you're talking about. It sounds like you're right on that borderline with the length you're proposing here. Is there any danger of a further shrinkage of, of the lake that would cause problems with the dock? That's just all I'm asking.
I guess you could have that for any of them, right?
Yeah, I just didn't know what the, what the protective margin was here, that's all.
It, it shouldn't.
Okay.
You feel confident that that's the length it needs to be?
Yes, yeah. My dad and I have lived there for over twenty years, so.
Okay.
Okay, that helps a lot. I think that helps a lot.
It does. Seeing that this is an open-form public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns specifically about this project? And so now would be the time? Not seeing any. Commissioners, do you have any final comments before we move on?
I'm on for staff. It looks from the, the plans that there are going to be, it's kind of like a fork, a three-pronged fork at the end. What, how many other docks on that lake or in general on other recreational development lakes in our city have similar, that are part of, not part of a Homer's associate or not, or not part of a larger multifamily?
I would say it's not uncommon. Because you'll have someone that'll have a pontoon boat. If it's on a larger lake like this, a pontoon boat, a pleasure boat, and they'll probably have a canoe or smaller proboat. So you need to have different areas and the right spacing and the right size to be able to anchor your boats correctly to the dock so they don't float away.
Well, the depth of the lake doesn't sound like anchoring is going to be a huge issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the final order twenty fourteen dash oh one.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, you can move forward with your project.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you very much. Final variance for tonight is twenty thirteen dash ten. The location is sixty-six forty Shady Oak Road, Eden Prairie. The request is to permit, to permit a hundred and seventy-six-foot building identification wall sign on the north elevation, to permit a hundred and seventy-six-foot building identification wall sign on the south elevation, to permit a fifty-square-foot building identification wall sign on the east elevation. City code permits one building identification wall sign per wall, per street frontage, not to exceed fifty square feet. With that being said, with the proponent of the project, please come forward. Tell us a little bit about your project. And will you also please tell us your name and spell your last name for city record?
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, folks, for the planning commission. Thanks for hearing me out today. My voice isn't the best. I'm going through some treatments in my throat, so you guys got to bear with me a little bit here this evening.
No problem. If you just grab that microphone, speak right into it so the viewing audience can see that.
My, my name is Sean Coaten. I own Core Commercial, I'm a commercial real estate broker. I represent Aerotech, the group that just moved into Eden Prairie. I've, I've worked, worked with Aerotech for about five or six years now. I put them in different, they're out of Baltimore, they're a national credit company, they're a great staffing group. And I brought Kelly Isley with me this evening. She's the manager of that office. So I'm just going to give you a little, a snapshot of what we're doing here. And I'll have Kelly come up and, and field questions for you guys because my voice is so bad. So bear with me. It's, it's, the, the variance twenty thirteen dash ten, request for a hundred and seventy-six square-foot building identification. Actually, folks, we, that's on the north side and the south side of that building that, that's the Central Bank has. That was a variance that was awarded by the city or something some time ago. What I'm really after today, what we're here today is to really see if we can get to permit a fifty-foot sign on the building, on the east elevation of the property, on the building. As you can see, we have a rendering up there. That's what we'd love to put with that sign up. And we understand, I met with Regina Rojas a couple of times this last couple of weeks or two or three weeks. And she said that the, the, the city allows us to put a sign on the first floor. Well, as you can see from that picture, you put a sign on the east, east side of the first floor and that's, you can't see the sign. It's not going to be too much good up there. So, folks, I'm here today to see if you guys can work with us and see if we can, we can identify this problem and get through it and grant us the variance for the sign. When I, when I take Aerotech to market, signage is extremely important. It's part of their criteria. They're, they're a staffing group. And we really looked between Jan Hassett and Eden Prairie. We chose Eden Prairie because for that building to have that east signage, we feel that that's important. My client really wants to be here. They love being here. And I'll let Kelly explain the story from here on out. This is Kelly Isley, folks.
Thank you very much.
Come on up, Kelly.
Good evening. My name's Kelly Isley, E.I.S.E.L.E., and I'm the Director of Business Operations for Aerotech in newly Eden Prairie. So we signed the lease this summer and moved in in September. And like I said, I'm here to speak on the behalf of my office and my team. So Eden Prairie was chosen and I actually relocated to start this office from Madison, Wisconsin, and have moved my family to Eden Prairie. Since then, we have thirty-five full-time employees that we've moved into that operation. We also employ, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with staffing companies, but currently on our payroll, we have over three hundred W-2 staff members that we service out of that operation. So we have three hundred people that need to get to our space consistently. Plus, as of January first, we have placed over one hundred people to work in the surrounding community. So the signage on the building and the type of personnel that we're working with, it's anywhere from manufacturing labor, ten-dollar-an-hour employees, to high-level software development engineers that we're placing here in Eden Prairie. So I've also hired five additional people that have started in the last six weeks that have relocated here. And that's not including the engineers that we're placing that we've relocated for our customers here locally as well. So we're doing a lot within the community. We're putting a lot of people to work here. But having that location and not having a sign has already started to propose some issues. Some of the folks that we work with don't have access to internet or cellular phones. Eden Prairie can be difficult to navigate at times. And I'm just speaking from someone who relocated here, so, yeah. So it's, it's become more crucial and our customers are asking for it as well. Our space is very large. We're the largest tenant in our building. And part of what we've done is build a state-of-the-art conference center for our customers to utilize for interviewing, meetings. And I've had some of them recently ask if we are going to get signage on the building. They're just having a hard time finding us, so with us being a new location. We have long-term commitment in the Southwest Metro. We chose Eden Prairie. I'm sure you're all well aware, but it's like one of the top best places to live in America, I think, number one, but I only...
Oh, no, it's number one.
Yeah. So I researched that prior to accepting the job. So Madison's like number three, so it's like I, I had to be sure. So we really appreciate the building. We love our space. We want to stay. But part of that is having signage on, on our buildings for the people we work with. So with that, that's...
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that being said, Mr. Franz, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have kind of an unusual situation with this bill. We have two Central Bank signs that are on the building that are illegal by two methods. One is there's a final order that was approved by the Board of Appeals and Adjustment for the Planning Commission to assume those responsibilities. And they had two conditions. One is the sign could only be from Marquette Bank, which is very unusual.
Can you speak in your microphone? I'm sorry, Mr. Franz, that can be what?
I wish this was longer.
I know, I'm sorry. You have to lean in.
And I've asked for longer things, so I like to sit back in the chair. But it's, it's very unusual for a variance to be granted to a tenant. It's very unusual for a variance to be even concerned about what the content of the sign is. Typically, standards or conditions that occur with a variance for the sign are based upon its design, its size, its scale, where it's on the building, the font size, the colors, the backlit, is it canned, is it floodlit? All those are typical conditions. What that meant is that in order for any other tenant to replace that sign, you have to come back to the Planning Commission. Well, obviously, there's no Marquette Bank sign in the building and the Central Bank is there. And we couldn't find anything in our record that said they were granted a permit. Had they come in for a permit, our records would have said you would have had to come to the Planning Commission. But we don't really want to punish the owner of the building or the tenant in the building for the signs that are there. It is what it is. From what we can tell, those signs are conforming to a hundred and seventy-six square feet. So we think it's fair in this situation by approving a ma, a final order to allow those two existing signs to stay on the building. If those two signs were coming in today at their signs, I would say that it would meet the three-part test.
That it would not?
Would not.
Okay.
Number one, it is an action that's created by the building owner, the desire to have a larger sign. We do not have other signs in the immediate locale that are office buildings that are larger than the fifty square feet. And the purpose of a building identification sign is for identification. It's not for advertisement, where you would see more than likely in the commercial districts. So the building signs that are out there now are about two hundred square feet larger in total than what the buildings is entitled to. So if someone came in today with no signs in the building, we would have said, you know, fifty square feet on each sign. Or if you wanted to apply for a variance, you could transfer some of your wall signs for footage from one wall to the other. And we've done that in numerous occasions. So because the existing signs are already bigger than the total amount allowed by code, because of the existing circumstances that got the signs there in the first place, we can't come up as a staff as a reason to justify having a third sign in the building. The other options for having another sign for advertising a tenant is they can have a monument sign out on the property. They can have one per frontage. Or they can be on the first floor in the building, perhaps by the building entrances, where it says their company name. And so our recommendation is to approve the final order, but only allows the two existing signs to remain.
But only allows the two existing signs to remain.
The other option would be is if you wanted to have a third sign, we'd have to go back to Central Bank or the building owner and say, if you want to reduce the size of those signs down to fifty square feet, then you'd have three compliant signs in the building. But I can't imagine that they would be too interested in wanting to do that.
Right. Okay, with that being said, yes, go, go ahead, please.
We thought about that. Mr. Franz, we thought about that.
If you can speak right into the microphone so it videoizes.
We thought about that, Mr. Franz. And Kelly already did talk to the people at the bank and, of course, they don't want to play at all, you know.
Right.
The other piece that's, I think, worth mentioning is that when we sign the lease of this building, it's written in the lease that we can have signage on the east, fifty-foot sign on the east part of the building. Had we known that this was going to be the issue? We only found out about this when the electrician asked for the permit and we went to apply for it and then got denied and here we are today. So it's, it's a very unfortunate circumstance for us. It's not considered for advertising. It is for location and identification of where we are. We're the largest tenant in the building. So I, I think that's all I can really say.
Great. Yeah, and I can tell you through past experience with my time here in the commission, we've talked about this at great length, not only with, you know, your organization. I can think of Stellant signs way back when or Stellant, that, that building is the nine-foot one that's right there, kind of over by Shady Oak and two twelve, Biotech, Best Buy. You and I have had many conversations about this, so it's never fun. Commissioners, what kind of comments or thoughts do you have about this? Travis, I see you weeding through the book over there. Did you find anything interesting?
I was just refreshing myself with the, the language, the legalese of what the definition of law sign really means. And I'm just trying to figure out, because it says, we're working with a three-decade-old city code ordinance here. I mean, this date's ninety-eighty-two is effective date. So I'm not certain, you know, in two thousand thirteen, we went through and did a whole host of code amendment changes for purposes of getting up with the times of what new, you know, we've got the active board or whatever they're called of... Yeah, messaging boards, enacted ordinance changes for that. We've got Convenience Gas for Airport Office. We've got artistic nature exempt from, or artistic-natured signage exempt from the sign square-foot requirements. I mean, is there a possibility that maybe we need to update? So that, you know, I, I don't know. Because it looks like, because they, there are other pictures here that have a lot of four-sided signage. And I'm not sure if they're non-conforming as well, based on the old, I've got two pages of it here, provided by the project proponent. provided by the project proponent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Some of those pictures are of commercial buildings where they're not limited by the frontage, based upon the amount of space that the tenant occupies. And so, you're going to find that in commercial districts, you can have up to three hundred square feet per wall. So, the commercial signs are going to be bigger than the office signs. And back in two thousand five, I believe, and I was reading the minutes, because the Commissioner Kirk and Stoltz were in the minutes, there was a discussion item about should we do something different with our office signs?
Right.
And the conclusion was, the majority was, we like the signs the way we have them. We don't want to change the code to make them larger. And if there were requests for larger signs, we'd rather review those on a case-by-case basis than if they met the criteria that we have for the granting of the variances.
Yeah, I mean, I think back, Commissioner Kirk, I don't know if you were with us or not, but we were talking, we did Life Touch, do you remember that one?
It was right before I started.
And Life Touch is a big building, in fact, I think they have two buildings.
They do.
And we made them conform, and you look at that sign, and it's pretty small compared to the building size. And maybe that should have some, you know, something to do with it.
I think we did have that discussion about...
We did.
Sign size and building size.
Right.
And all.
It's been a while, but yeah.
This is a frustrating circumstance. I mean, I see merit to the proponents' argument, there's no question that they make a logical case. For me, on the other hand, and the way, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understand it is there's basically one sign that was allowed by variance and a second sign that is, has no approval?
Actually, there were signs that were approved in nineteen eighty-six for Marquette Bank, one on the north and south side of the building.
So, both of those signs were approved?
Both of those signs, so Central Bank is basically occupying a similar square-footage area as the Marquette Bank sign did back in nineteen eighty-six.
Okay, so the illegality of those signs is really the content of the sign, not the size?
Right.
It's, you know, this gets into that precedent equity issue of, you know, if we approve a variance for this building...
Then you open up the Pandora's Box for others.
And Eden Prairie has prided itself in, you know, limiting the signs. I mean, that's, you know, we are one of the top communities in the country, and, you know, that's one of the characteristics of the community. On the other hand, and I'm playing both sides here, on the other hand, pretty good argument for why this sign is very desirable for the tenant, and we certainly want to be a, you know, a business-friendly city government, that's for sure. So, I'm at a little bit of a loss here.
Well, a couple of comments strike me, I also agree that your points are well-taken. And having been in business for a long time, I can understand exactly what you're saying. When I look at the visuals of the sign you're proposing, to me, it's relatively untruthful. And if I read my materials correctly, the new fifty-foot sign would fit city code if we didn't talk about the other signs for the moment, because it's fifty feet. This building has a unique history with these larger signs and how they came about. I am a little concerned about penalizing this new firm because of that unique history. And the other thing, when I look at this, it doesn't strike me as being much more than pretty innocent. I don't know that I'm really clear what harm it does, but I understand the context in which this is occurring. So, I'm a little, I tend to lean more toward thinking, this is fine, but it's a unique circumstance if you're not going to have come up on another building, I wouldn't think. Not the exact circumstance.
We may not have an exact circumstance, but to Mr. Kirk's concerns of going, or being able to go both directions, I kind of think that's why I propose the idea of maybe taking a look at what our language is of three decades ago and what could be accomplished to bring that up to speed. And then that would be a conversation that would probably involve other property owners, and it would be, I mean, it would be a longer, a lengthier ordeal, but it may help benefit more businesses and more property owners and more buildings, you know, managed by, in the area.
When was the last time the code was updated, Mr. Franzen?
We do code updates to various sections every year. Some of them are due to a state requirement that's passed on to us, some of it's a federal requirement that comes down the food chain. Some of them are problems that we found in the city that the council wanted us to correct, and so we made those changes. Some of them are desirable changes, where we wanted a higher quality of finish in our exterior building materials, where we wanted to add landscaping, we do a lot of environmental additions to the code to protect our natural resources. You know, the one circumstance that I heard from the advocate was they weren't able to find the building because they don't have a sign for their tenant. And I don't use my GPS at all, I have, but if someone told me our business is located in the Central Bank Building, and I know the Central Bank Building's off of Shady Oak Road and 212, once you find the Central Bank Building, you just go to the front door. It's no different than going to downtown Minneapolis. If I'm looking for my attorney's office, he says I'm in the IDA Center, I'm not going to know what floor he's on on the basis of whether he has a sign there or not. So, you have to look at, you know, what is the intent and purpose of ordinances to identify the building?
Right.
And I think that the building is identified by the fact that they have two signs.
I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but the southwest light rail line at that Shady Oak, there's been some conversation on that. What are the visual impacts to having proper office signage? And being able to see that building, or impacts or detriments or positives will there be with the southwest outer T-line that you've got, the way it sits now? Some may find it difficult, some may see it just fine, but when you're going to have another southwest line...
Yeah, I mean, it's coming on the other side of the street as it is right now anyways, but, the light rail, but yeah. Yes, please.
As any good tenant in a building, you make friends with the people that are already there. So, I've gotten to know one of the vice presidents in the Central Bank, and they are a huge proponent, that floor sat empty for years, he told me. And the fact that we have people coming into the building is impacting their business. They're starting to get new bank customers. So, him and I are starting to work together to strum up more business strategy and how to help each other. So, the tenants of the building appreciate that we're there. Two of them have already become customers of ours, that we're helping drive employees to their building as well. So, there's positive impacts of us, people being able to find us. And we're well-recognized, not by the Central Bank. And if you've come down 212, Central Bank is not always easily seen, and coming down Shady Oak, you can't always see it either. So, for building identification purposes, you know, my only point to that is not everyone can see the Central Bank. We're only asking for a simple backlit stainless-steel sign that fits all the city requirements. And truthfully, we wouldn't have selected the space had we known this was going to happen. Like, we selected the space based on that, we had three other spaces in mind. So, we selected that one based on where we could have the visibility for the building.
Would they be willing, as you said, as you've become friends, would they be willing to bring their signage down in order to help their new friend that just moved in?
It's a conversation that's been had very lightly, that's not something that they're really interested in. They don't want to mitigate the loss of their business for our success.
Right.
I've treaded delicately there. So, the property management that got brought up, they were not very fond of it. The Central Bank, I think, has been a long-term tenant for that building. So, I think the property management is, would like to keep them as a long-term partner, and it's also costly, because they would be the ones that would have to fit the bill for that.
I understand your position completely. The problem is the property management misrepresented what they could offer. And the consequences are bad for you, or depending on your interpretation, potentially bad for the city.
Sure.
And you're an innocent victim in this.
Right.
You went in, you know, with no intention of, you know, breaking any rules.
No, of course not.
And unfortunately, it was misrepresented, and so now, it's frustrating sitting on this side of the desk to say, okay, let's make it okay. It's okay to, you know, misrepresent something, and the city will just make it okay. So, that's the dilemma. Your position is well-understood, very reasonable, and it's, we certainly don't want to penalize you, if at all possible.
Sure.
On the other hand, the party that seemingly misrepresented something, there's no consequences for that. And that's, for me personally, frustrating.
I agree.
Not to say that we might not choose to go that way, I'm just saying it's frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, I think my biggest concern is just, again, we've talked about it, the other people that would come forward in Pandora's Box, and what else is open? And I think it could be a big mess. Now, I would be willing, if other people would be willing, to take a look at the sign ordinance again and see if that, I mean, maybe it's time. Because I don't think this is, this obviously isn't the first, and it's not going to be the last.
But do you really think we would revise a sign ordinance to allow, you know, what is it? Three hundred and eighty square feet of signs on three sides of a building?
I don't know necessarily that, I know that there's, might, correct me if I'm wrong, I know that you can add signage together and manipulate the system a little bit to get bigger signs if you want to add it in one area and not on the other. You can add the square footage together, is that accurate?
By variance, the commission could do that.
Okay. I mean, I just take a look, I take a look at that Life Touch sign that was approved based on what the ordinance is, and I look at the size of the building, I'm like, they should be able to have a larger sign, but because of the way the ordinance is written, it is what it is, right? I would entertain different ideas when it came to that particular building.
The only thing that comes to my mind is, this is a pretty unique situation. You have two one-hundred-and-seventy-six-foot signs. If those signs were to be brought by anyone else for approval, they would not fit city code and probably would not get that approval without a significant variance. So, part of what I don't understand is if we were to approve this new sign, which does fit the city code by itself, how we're setting a precedence for an expanded effort to create larger signs, because we wouldn't approve the larger signs if they didn't fit city code.
Well, but we did approve the signs that didn't fit the city code.
What sounded to me, correct me if I'm wrong, is those signs came about, and I don't know if they were approved, at least the most recent ones were approved.
From what the background is, that the two hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot signs were approved with conditions that they only denounce, or have Marquette Bank on them. It's the non-permitted Central Bank sign.
So, the new Central Bank signs have not, were not approved, they just occurred?
They were approved, that they would be Marquette Bank, and that no additional wall signs would be permitted on the building.
Which is weird.
Yeah. It kind of stifens the opportunity for other businesses to go into that location, and that's very unique to that, like, to your point. I, to some of the other points addressed, I mean, it is kind of strange. You look out at a wall of a certain square footage length and height, and the office comparable to some of the other zoning areas, I don't believe has a square footage calculation, I think it's just, it's it, and that's that. You have your square-foot sign, and it's not a fraction of the availability or the size of your facade. And so, some of the other districts and some of the other things that we've done in two thousand thirteen, looked at that and said, okay, well, we've got, we're building taller, we're creating a lot of unique types of exterior surfaces and using different types of exterior products in our zoning districts. I mean, why not update the signs as well?
I have a question for you, thank you, I appreciate that, Travis. Where did you get your calculation, did you get your calculation for the one-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet based on the other signs that are out there? Do you have some sort of calculation that says that we want to be able to see these signs, and we want people to be able to see these signs from, I'll make the numbers up, a quarter-mile away, a half-mile away? How, where did you come up with the one-hundred-and-seventy-six? And is there some movement in that number?
Well, the one-hundred-and-seventy-six, we don't want the one-hundred-and-seventy-six. We're just...
Okay, so the fifty, even the fifty.
I asked Regina Rojas, I said, I've always noticed when I come to the city, I always ask permission whether to wait to get scolded. So, I talked to Regina, I said, Regina, we're coming in, you know, what can we do? How do we want to go about this? And she kind of said, the city codes are this much. She said the one-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot, both those signs for Central Bank were kind of grandfathered in thirty-some years ago.
Right.
And I said, boy, that's kind of unfair, but that's the way it is, because they were the acre tenant, now AeroTech's the largest tenant in the building, and they can't even get any signage, which is really a shame. So, I said, Regina, what, she goes, I don't really want one-hundred-and-seventy-six or three-hundred feet of signage. I, just like, whatever the code allows, she goes, well, we think we could get a possible variance for fifty feet. I said, great, we'll take it if we can get it, so we'll come in and talk about it.
And that's where you came up with that number?
Yes, and then she says, well, you got to put on the first floor, and we're under the building, and it can't, you know, the first floor, it's not going to work. So, up there in that corner would be, to me, it doesn't look cluttery, but, you know, I mean, again, so that's kind of where we're at. I think it's a shame, though, I really do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
I guess I had a question for the project proponent, so, had you considered a monument, any monument signage?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Because isn't it true that a monument would be permitted, because it's not a wall sign?
You are, we have a tag on the monument sign by the, by the, or by Shady Oak that goes to the driveway.
Okay, so there is something there already?
It's just not visible from 212 at all, right?
You have to go right to the driveway to see it.
Right.
The way I read is a fifty-foot, what they're requesting is conforming by the code, because it's one wall sign per...
But you go back to the lease of the building that's done?
Per street frontage, per wall, so one side per, one sign per wall, per street frontage. So, there's isolated, they wouldn't be here in front of us. It's the two hundred-and-seventy-six non-conforming that was a part of the old variance that we're having to grapple with. Now, we can just continue that on, or we can have a conversation of the whole ordinance itself. But that's the way that I see it, we can just continue kicking it down, you know, kicking the...
I mean, if the trees weren't there, we'd take the first floor. I mean, we'd take what we can get here, but you can't even see it. It's just a waste of fifteen thousand dollars, but up beside it, you can't see it.
Right, so...
And this is even the middle of winter, you can't see it.
Right, right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Franzen, as I see it, then, the real crux of the problem is these two one-hundred-and-seventy-six-foot, square-foot signs, which there was no, there's no permits for them, they're there. Way back when, in nineteen eighty-six, they kind of said, we're going to put two signs on the building, that's it, no more, which, to your point, is kind of odd to begin with, so maybe that is...
It's not odd to have a condition saying no additional signs. What is odd is putting the condition that it has to be for the Marquette Bank.
Right, right.
So, if they had left it at a one-hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot sign, we wouldn't have to kind of re-approve that variance tonight.
What if the bank left, what if the bank left tomorrow?
The bank left tomorrow, and they took the signs down?
But the ordinance only says for the bank, or not the ordinance per the...
They left, then another tenant, this tenant could take the one-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet and put their sign in their place.
But it does say in here, per your language, it says the signs could only be for Marquette Bank.
That was the original condition of approval. With this final order, you eliminate the condition that it's tied to a specific tenant.
Got it.
So, if Central Bank left, and they like, hmm, you got room to do a one-hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot sign for a business, they come and apply for a permit.
They could get it.
They put it in that same location, and they're going to go.
Okay, so it removes the specific bank name?
Bank name.
Understood.
They have to have fifty more square feet of signage.
Right, yeah.
So, the rest of all worlds in compromise is Central Bank takes down one sign, and this company gets the space on one side of the bill.
And that, to me, gets that kind of the odd thing. You have two one-hundred-and-seventy-six-foot signs that basically have not been approved, because it was only allowed for Marquette Bank.
That's correct.
So, from an argumentative standpoint, it's hard to, it's hard for me to see how two... two unapproved signs can cause the demise of one that's fitting the city code. And yet, I do understand. But, that's the other side of the coin, that what's become apparent is we have two unapproved signs there, and is it really fair for those two unapproved signs to preclude one that fits the city code? I know it's a unique situation, but to me, that's the other side of the coin.
But, again, to play the devil's advocate, basically, we have a building owner who has ignored a variance, has two unapproved signs, has made a commitment that they were not able to make because of those variances to a client, and now we're saying, never mind, it's okay.
No, I mean, that point's well taken.
And I'm a rule follower, so that bugs me.
Oh, I am too.
On the other hand, just to balance the argument, we've got a good client here who's brought good business into the community, has a reasonable request for a sign that makes sense. So, that's the dilemma.
Do we have the right, does the city have a right to be able to go back to the bank and say, there's no permit on file for these signs? By order, you have to take those signs down, clean the slate, and start over with that building? If there's no permit on file for those signs, I'm not saying we want to do that, but, you know, if you want to clean the slate and make it a playing, a fair playing field for all parties.
You know, we do have a code enforcement officer, and we don't go out and look for violations, they usually come to us.
Right.
For getting an indication from the commission that we should go out and enforce our code, we will go out and do that, and give them X number of days to correct that. Now, what they would do is, they'll say, I want to keep the signs in the building, they'll come in and apply for variance, nor to retain them.
Okay, so, well, but we may have, we may have an option.
That's kind of the sort of thing I was, at least pointing out, is a potential option.
Right, so we go back, our order here is to say, we want that rule enforced. We send them a letter, the city sends them a letter of the, of our conversation today, and maybe the new tenant over there can have a conversation with them and say, hey, look, here's what everyone thought, we want fair use of the building as well, and maybe a deal can be made between the two tenants that doesn't make us go to the next step. Does that make sense? Is everyone kind of with me? It's kind of a card we have to play.
I would be leery to throw out government running around, trying to get in the toes of everybody that's been there for, I mean, they've been there forever, and there might be some legal contesting on grandfather clauses or something. We might be opening up a Pandora's Box, we don't want to be flooded with all these variances now, like we've been dealing with telecom problems or projects for, during two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Now we'll be flooded with all these variances, looking to, otherwise non-conforming, to be conforming.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thought is, this came to the commission this way, we now know that someone could be potentially in violation of city code, there's no permit on record for it, and if the commissioners wanted it addressed, we could at least address it, see what happens. I mean, I think the conversation can take place. Has the city of Eden Prairie talked to the bank at all?
We made the bank aware that they were in violation of it. They searched their records, the sign companies searched their records.
Couldn't find anything?
They can't find anything.
I'm trying hard for you. Trying hard for you. I know, you don't want to be, you don't want to be the back end.
I really don't want to make enemies with the bank either.
I know, I know.
You know, like, best case scenario, give us the sign, we'll go away, and keep putting people to work at Eden Prairie. I really don't, I'm a rule follower, like, I don't like to make waves for other people either, but if that's what, you know, is, I also have a business to run, so my leadership is telling me, get the sign on the building, so if that's what needs to happen, then, you know, if that's what needs to happen, wouldn't be our first choice either.
I completely understand. I'll keep talking until someone tells me. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Fransen, would you be open to having the bank and the proponent here, in a conversation here, just kind of tell them about our conversation? We postpone this meeting until the next time, to get kind of both parties together and talk about it?
We can do that.
Would you be open to that?
It's your pleasure, we want to continue the hearing for a couple of weeks, and open a dialogue with, you know, building owner and Central Bank, and see what can come out of that.
Commissioner Kirk?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
I don't think it hurts, right?
No, I, this gets everybody...
Well, I mean, let's look for the win in here. What we want to do is find the win for everybody.
Exactly.
And, you know, right now, it's a win-lose for the city, in my mind. And I think the party...
You have two unhappy people, if the Central Bank comes down.
Yeah.
And they have to come in and try reapply for another sign, or they have a smaller sign, so they're going to, there's going to be an expense involved with that, and whether that's a tenant improvement or a building improvement, that's part of their negotiations.
I think we need to think really hard about that.
Okay.
I mean, to be honest, we, it would be nice to look for, what's that undiscovered compromise we haven't seen here? You know, because we don't want to, in a sense, the bank is a good corporate citizen as well.
Absolutely.
So, we don't want to cause them undue hardship. The easy way to do it is just roll over, but that's not very satisfying to see.
Two people on the audience, I would approve of that.
Do you want to ask the audience?
The many that have come tonight? I just keep coming back to, I mean, trying to find a good scenario, I mean, this is so unique, and it's come in front of us, that it's started to ask very pointed, specific questions for this office zoning district. And I just keep coming back in my mind, that this would be a catalyst, a great opportunity to start a dialogue conversation that would involve other business and property owners in this area, draft a more updated, it may not change by much, but at least everyone is part of the, you know, those that are interested would be at the table, put forward their information, we'd be able to hear their case on the public process of amendment, code amendment change.
The other thing I would throw out is, it seems to me that you've got a building that's owned and being leased to different tenants. The owner's responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, for meeting city code, et cetera, et cetera. The tenants lease under certain conditions, given that, you know, like these folks, they assume that those, that the city code is being followed. Seems to me the one that the discussion should be had with is the owner of the building, to see if that owner has some willingness to address what we've brought up here. Central Bank is a leasing.
Right.
And so, Central Bank, to me, isn't very culpable in this thing. The owner, I mean, you've got, you've leased to tenants who have needs, but we also need to meet city code, what do you, as the owner, propose to do? An example would be that if there was a cost to changing the Central Bank signs, that the owner would absorb it. I'm just, I'm just saying, to me, that's, those are the folks who are running the show on that building.
Is this, in our packet, is this the current language that you have, the landlord-tenant sign language? I have a signs four-point-five, yeah. It's just an excerpt, but...
In fairness, to most, the planning commissioner just said there, Travis, what he said was, in fairness to that, and we're talking about, I read the owner here, they probably saw the two central signs, noticed that, you know, went to city code and noticed you could get a signage on east or west, that's what it said in the lease. I don't really blame the owner of the building either, really, because they looked at it, they had no idea that we, they probably assumed, which is a terrible word, east or west elevation, probably up top where the central signs are. So, you know what I mean? I don't think they knew this in advance and tried to stick it to Aerotech. I don't think, I read, I've done business with I REIT properties for years.
No, I don't, and I don't, at least, I don't think anyone is saying, first of all, we're not looking to blame anybody.
Okay.
And I don't think anyone is saying there's any culpability in terms of what's gone on here. The question is, who's best to, at least, over the period of a couple more weeks, who's best to have a discussion with, potentially resolve it?
Yes.
So if you're the owner of the building, part of your responsibility, or part of what you're trying to do is optimize your income by attracting leases who can prosper in their individual businesses. So here you have a case, where one of those leases may not prosper quite to the same degree as they would like. Why wouldn't you discuss that with the owner and see if you can come to some solution?
And if the lessor gets involved, and the two tenants can probably, that would be a little bit, a little bit easier, less strained on the relationship.
I'm just saying, that's another alternative, that the owner is responsible for compliance. Why not wait a couple weeks and have a discussion with the owner about what might work? Or you've got, you've got a leasing that's not going to optimize their business according to their thinking if something isn't done.
Well, yeah, we just, we're open to anything, we've come here for your help today, we sure appreciate your time, we don't know what to do.
And we appreciate your patience with us as we kind of mull through this, thank you very much. So with that being said, let's get this out of the way, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments, specific comments? I have to ask. Not seeing any. Commissioners, why don't we kind of go around, and I just want to kind of see where your guys' head is with this, is that all right? Travis, you want to start us off, then?
I'll kick this off. I think I have said it multiple times here tonight, I think this would be a great opportunity for which we can hinge pin the efforts of going forward in a formal, formal way, looking at our ordinance for the office area on the signs. I would be leaning towards a continuance, and then I would, I'm not sure if a continuance to a specific date would be appropriate, maybe if we were just wanting to isolate this outside of that, but I do feel that it would be an opportunity that the city would be able to update, as we have in 2013, with multiple different code amendments in varying zoning districts, and creation of a new zoning district in their signage, so.
Okay, so your vote would be continuance, take a look at the verbiage for city code for signage, and then kind of go from there?
Yeah, and I, but that has a whole nother process, so that would, you need some yielding of patience on...
Right.
The project proponents as well, because that's a whole new process, and code changes a new, so if you were to continue it, based on code change, we would not continue this to a certain date, they would become a part of a much larger impact upon the code itself. So, they would be in conversation...
Right.
In a greater realm. Now, that would be my direction.
Okay, thank you. Katie?
I would also vote for a continuance with the direction that the existing tenants, it is a hard situation, they've been there for a long time, however, they are creating an actual hardship for other potential tenants by not following code. So, I think it would be, best course of action would be to have the building owner, you know, sit down with their leases and the city, and say, here's what's going on, I know it's been a situation, we need to change it moving forward, so everyone can play ball.
Okay. John? Thank you.
I would, I think there ought to be a discussion with the building owner, but frankly, when you put all of this together, I'm going to counter most of my arguments and say, I would probably vote, I would probably, after a discussion, a continuance to have a discussion, I would probably say, we've got a new, a new good corporate citizen, and I'd like to see them flourish in our community, and I'd probably vote to go ahead with it, allow the variance, and swallow my frustration.
So would you be okay, I'm trying to peel it back a little bit, would you be okay for a continuance, for at least a short term?
Yes, yeah, I would be. In fact, I think a continuance, just to have a discussion, and if nothing else, to let, you know, the building owner know that this is very, this is kind of frustrating to the city. I'm not sure it's the battle that we need to fight too far, personally.
Steve, you have any?
Yeah, I'd be, I pretty much agree with what Katie said, I think, I would, I think a continuance should be had, and it'll be important for the owner and the leases to have a discussion about this, and see what solution they would recommend. And then we get together and review those discussions and make whatever decisions. I mean, I think, I still think that what you're asking for is very legitimate, but it's legitimate in the context of an unusual history. And so that's why the continuance and the discussion with the owner, who has the power to fund change, if the owner wanted to, is a good one to have before we make a decision, I think.
Kelly, why don't you come up, and then I'll, hold on one second, let me just kind of, no, please come forward. So I think, you know, I would vote for a continuance too, and let me kind of tell you why I believe the commissioners, when you look at it face value, you kind of want to say, look, it doesn't conform, it's not kind of what everything is, and so we want to say no. I think everyone here wants to say yes, and wants to feel good about saying yes. So that's kind of why I would believe why we got to a continuance, and why I would vote for a continuance as well, so that we can maybe sit all parties down and talk about it. Mr. Fransen does miracles when he gets in a room and has meetings, so you never know.
My name's not on the staff here.
Okay, Regina, Regina does miracles. I think it would be a good idea just to kind of get everybody in a room and to have an open, honest conversation, and kind of see where, where we get to.
My question is very similar to that, is what if, I tend to play devil's advocate too, so, what if the property owner doesn't really cooperate or respond? That's a situation we've somewhat run into already, so that's a concern of mine, that by, I certainly appreciate the continuance and not just saying no, of course, but, that's just, what happens then? What, where do we go from there?
I think they may be willing to have an open conversation, once they know that we put a continuance down with the expectation that this, the person who owns the building, the company that owns the building, would be sitting down with the tenants and kind of talking and having an open conversation. I think you would be surprised at what they would be willing to discuss at that time, if they knew that it was an order by this council to be able to do so.
Well, and building on that, I mean, I think, I think what we're asking for is an energetic look at solutions. So, if you're the owner of the building, and the space that you folks have leased has not been occupied for a long time, you're not optimizing your income.
Right.
So now you have an opportunity to optimize your income, and that may help to provide some, some money, to make some necessary changes to the signage where it's currently not conforming. And so, I think what we would request is an earnest effort on the part of the owner to work with the leases, to see if there's a solution that's amenable to everybody.
And to be honest, if they aren't cooperative, then we got to make a call.
Okay.
Yeah.
And at least we know we've investigated and looked for alternatives, and gotten everybody involved, and then ultimately, you know, we as a commission have to make the call, and so...
Right, and I can't remember, I can't remember at any time when we've had a continuance, and we've had, had the parties go out and have a meeting where some good fruits didn't become of it.
Okay.
Where all parties were just stubborn and weren't going to move.
This is honestly my very first experience with all of this.
I hope it's been fun for you.
I have learned a lot, let's just put it that way.
But I, it would be our hope that something good comes out of the meeting, and I have a belief that it will. And please know that we're acting in your benefit, at least, I know I can speak for myself that I am, and I think it'll be a positive meeting, we'll see what we can do, and we're glad to have you here as part of the community, and our hopes is that you stay.
We really love the running paths.
Thanks for coming, thanks for coming to Eden Prairie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So with that, so with that being said, Mr. Fransen, do you have anything to add before this commission makes a...
The commission needs to continue the public hearing to a date certain, our next meeting is February twenty-fourth.
Does that give city staff enough time to get a meeting set up with all the parties and be able to have a decommunication?
Usually if the parties are willing to come to the table, the meetings happen very quickly, if they're not willing to come to the table. If they say it needs more time, they may have to request an extension to another meeting.
Okay.
So, we'll be back with either someone here or someone not here to give you enough time, but we're ready.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, do you all feel good with that outcome, for now?
I do, and just want to make one final statement, there was a blurb about throwing out our law enforcement or code compliance personnel out there looking for non-compliance. I don't, I am happy that this commission is going forward in a discussionary fact, I don't see that it would be a very good light in the city, just saying, okay, let's go out and try to enforce something that could be construed as... go out and try to enforce something that could be construed as-
Saying that in-
Very negative, so.
Saying that in different words, I, and I think I'm agreeing completely with you, I think we need to be very careful about choosing when to utilize the authority of the city.
Yeah.
And, and it's got to be something that's very much worth it. I agree with, with our chairman in saying, I think a healthy discussion's a good thing, and I think we need to do that carefully, and choose, choose our circumstances carefully.
Yeah, choose the tools that would need-
Choose when to use what tool, I agree completely.
Okay, very good. So, with that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend continuance to the February 24th, 2014 meeting.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, there you go. Thank you, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
And welcome.
Thank you.
That was some good conversation, I appreciate everyone's patience and support too. Mr. Fransen, with that being said, do you have a plan to report for us tonight?
In addition to this continued item at our next meeting, we will have a site plan review for the aquatics addition to the community center.
Say that one more time, we'll have a site-
Site plan review to look at the-
Oh, for the aquatic center.
Aquatic center.
Very good. Okay, anything else on the planners' report?